I started that rod.
Great game. He's getting score.
I think everybody's pretty much in place, so we'll get started. Welcome to our regularly scheduled Board of Supervisor meeting today. If you would please to stand and join me for our nation's flag salute, remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. It's always a pleasure to be able to recognize public service. People have dedicated their lives and time to helping their communities, and it's hard to imagine people being more dedicated and helpful than those who are engaged in protecting our property and our lives in the firefighting community. So this morning, we want to recognize county firefighters for decades of public service, and we've broken this out a little bit differently so that each district supervisor will be presenting the appropriate plaques or certifications. Chief, did you want to say a few words before we begin the process?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, please identify yourself.
Pardon me?
Please identify yourself.
Yeah, Steve Sunderland, Tulare County Fire Chief. This is our second, and at least for the time being, final installment of recognizing our senior firefighters. All of the folks that have been recognized have been in a past event, and today have in excess of 25 years' service dedicated to the protection of life and property in Tulare County through their service of the fire department. With that, let's go.
All right. Very good. Well, we'll begin with District One, Mr. Alan Ashida. We'll present three presentations.
Good morning. I have the honor to give the first certificate to Robert Rainey. Forty years. Now, Robert gets a certificate instead of a seal because Robert's still active with the fire department. So congratulations, and thank you very much for all your years of service. Let me get around here. We have Juan Bob Martinez, 32 years of service, and he's retired, so he gets the county seal that we give out for service over 25 years. Robert, I think you got shorty. He got a certificate besides the seal. Here we have Jack Willingham, 28 years of service, and he's retired, so he gets the county seal. The last one is Gabriel Espinola, in 26 years, and he is still active.
Thank you, Mr. Ashida. The next presentation will be given by Mr. Pete Vanderpoel.
A little bit shorter than Alan, so I'll pull the microphone down to my height. I have the pleasure of presenting a certificate today to a longstanding Tulare County resident. And, you know, I only have the opportunity to present one certificate. Actually, it's a plaque, but I have to tell you, the man that I'm presenting this, plaque two, does the work of probably about 20 people, and he's involved in all 20 little communities that I represent down in South Tulare County. So without further ado, I'd like to recognize John Gutierrez for his 30 years of service to Tulare County and the people of South County. So, John, please join me.
And yes, he has served more years than Pete's been alive. Goes without saying. At this time, we'd like to move to District Five. Mr. Mike Guinness has a number of presentations he'll be making this morning.
Thank you. Kind of caught me by surprise there, you know, being the fifth district. I thought I was gonna save the best to last, but I guess I ain't going to. So first of all, I'd like to call up Randy Young, and he has 32 years of service to Tulare County as a volunteer. Now, I'd like to call up Michelle Ray from the Camp Nelson area, who has done a great job for 29 years. Thank you. And next is Alan Ray, 26 years of service to Tulare County Fire. Well, I guess Alan didn't make it, but thank you all for your service to Tulare County as volunteers. You're not only a volunteer to our fire department, but a vital part of our different communities, too. So thank you very much.
Well, last but certainly not least, it's my privilege to present two different ones today. One of our honorees is not able to be here with us this morning. This first individual is still an active member after 38 years and still going strong, and we honored his father at the first time because he had over 50 years of service. And so, like father, like son, Robert Barnes Senior has served Tulare County for 38 years, and we want to recognize him here this morning. Our next individual has retired on us after only 32 years. I'm sure he had more good years in him, but we're very happy to honor Alan Landon with the highest honor that the county can give, which is the seal of Tulare County. Alan, would you come forward this time? And apparently Alan wasn't able to make it today, so we'll give this to the chief, make sure he receives it. Thank you all for your participation, for being here this morning, and thank you for allowing us to give our kudos to you for the hard work and the many years of dedicated service you've given to Tulare County. So let's give them all a big round of applause. At this time, we'll take up our public comment period. Your honorees are welcome to stay, or if you'd like to get away, and free to do that this time. Our public comment period is an opportunity for the public to comment on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the county of Tulare, but not on our agenda. So if you'd like to approach us now at this time and give us your name and address, public comment period is now open.
I walked the wrong way.
All right.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board.
Wait, 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 wait. Mr. Huntley, start your process.
I break everything I touch. It's not unusual at all. In fact, I feel more at home and comfortable when something is broken. I'm Tim Huntley, the county's Human Resources Director. I'm here under public comments to announce that this Thursday, we're having our third annual Share the Health Fair. And go ahead and please present those. Rhonda Shustrom, the Assistant Human Resources Director, and Ruth Medlin, the County Training Officer, are... Okay, so we're gonna do a tag-team thing here. These green bags are provided to us by Walgreens, which is our pharmacy benefit manager. In these bags, you will find a number of different items, including some locally grown raisins, some walnuts, some hand cleaner, and a variety of other items. And these will be handed out at the fair to all the employees who come in. In addition, we have oranges that we're getting at the last minute, so we're featuring healthy foods.
Tim, I was concerned when you said homegrown as to what might all be in that bag, but...
Okay, well... Not my homegrown. Valley homegrown. This is our third fair. This is...I have every expectation this is gonna be the biggest and best yet. It's something we do on behalf of the employees. We focus on wellness, not just physical wellness, but we talk about financial wellness, and we have a number of vendors who are coming. It's this Thursday, we kick off our employee open enrollment for health insurance for next year. Just to give you a flavor, we have 57 exhibitors. There are...and that, by the way, is set forth in this brochure that was passed to you that's in these handouts. Now, I'd just like to quickly run over a couple of things to show the scope and breadth of this particular program, if I may. We will have three buses at the fair. The Anthem Blue Cross bus will be doing health assessments, health risk assessments. The Tulare County Library bus will be there, and the Central California Blood Center Blood Mobile will be there. So employees will have the opportunity to give blood if they wish to do so. In addition, there are probably two main entities in addition to the General County effort that are key to this fair. One is Health and Human Services, the agency. They are a big contributor, both in terms of some of the giveaways that we have, as well as providing a number of booths for exhibits and providing services to county employees. Also, Coia Delta Hospital is participating with four booths this year. We will have wellness education breakout sessions, including Dr. Kobachian. He's being provided by Risk Management. He's gonna talk about health issues for veterans. We have Dr. Kawagawa, who does our psychiatric evaluations for selected physicians. He's gonna be talking about dealing with stress. We'll have a Jazzercise demonstration. We'll have In Shape Health Clubs. We'll also be doing a demonstration. We have Tsera. We're doing a special session on retirement benefits. And then we have some...oh, at lunchtime, we're gonna have Chef Deb, who's gonna do some healthy cooking and provide samples. And then we will have Supervisor Ennis there in the morning. He'll be officially welcoming the employees to the health fair. First year, we had about 700. Last year, we had about 900. We're anticipating over 1,000 this year. And then we have the We demo, and we have certain celebrities from the Board of Supervisors and staff will be participating in We bowling. And that will include Supervisor Vanderpool, CAO Jean Rousseau, Supervisor Cox, and John Davis. So... So I've taken up a lot of your time. Let me just take one more moment to thank Ruth Medlin, who has honchoed this program for the last three years. She couldn't have done it, however, without the help of our new Employee Health Benefits Coordinator, Lupi Garza, and also the tremendous help we get from volunteers from all different county departments. So we look forward to seeing all of you on Thursday at the convention center, and join us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. I present...appreciate your presentation. I'm sorry I won't be here. I have the glad job of sitting at a Commission State Mandate meeting in Sacramento on Thursday. I would rather be at your fair competing on the bowling tournament, but thank you for doing that. It's a great opportunity for our employees to learn about their own health issues and some ways to think about maybe improving their health and staying healthy. So, very good. Thank you so much. Anybody else wishing to address us during our public comment period? Seeing no one, we'll close the public comment period and bring it then to our next item, which are board matters, and I'll begin on my right with Mr. Ennis this morning.
Yeah, I wonder if...of course, Tim's probably already left, but I wonder if that healthy cooking has anything to do with country gravy, so...
The absence thereof.
Throw that in there. No, we're starting to see some fruits from our Loop bus meeting we had a couple of weeks ago in Porterville. We already have four applications that have been approved. Porterville Youth Center will be using the bus to take people to the Adventure Park in Visalia. We have a city-sponsored, what they call the fifth quarter after the football games, and they'll be transporting the kids from the stadium over to the Heritage Center in Porterville. We'll also be sending kids over to the McDormett Field, House, and Lindsay for a kickoff for the Red Ribbon Week. And also, we'll be participating in an event, students from Porterville at Reconnecting Youth in Tulare. So glad to see that Porterville is on board, and we're starting to use this Loop bus to the best for our youth. Also, continuing to work on our Step Up Summit for Terabala-Ducor and Rich Grove area. That will be happening on October 19th from 5:00 to 7:30 in the evening at Carl Smith Middle School. So those are things that are doing in my district that I'm pretty proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ashida?
I'd like to respond to Tim Huntley's presentation on our health fair. Tulare County and Fresno County went together and formed a joint partnership in healthcare insurance, and this year, when our premium rate came up, our premium rate went up 3% to 4% higher than Fresno County's premium because of the usage that our employees in Tulare County have a higher usage rate than Fresno County. So it's extremely important that we keep all of us healthy because it affects us every year as to what our health insurance rates will go up or stay the same. So I think it's a very valuable and worthwhile investment in having our health fair. Last week, Supervisor Ennis and I participated in the Rural Counties...Rural Supervisor Counties Conference, and there's approximately 22 rural counties that belong to this organization. We are classified as a suburban county, but a lot of our issues, because of our east side and the national forests and the national park, we share common interests, and we participate with our colleagues that are from smaller counties. Also, last week, the Farm Bureau had a great event out at Richie's Barn, and it was the first taste of the county, and it was well-attended, and it was a very successful event. Yesterday, I was in Delano at the Rail-X facility, and we had a meeting with the Rail-X executives about their future expansions of services in the San Joaquin Valley. And they are very optimistic about at least doubling their business in the San Joaquin Valley. So we potentially could see 110 cars a week leaving the San Joaquin Valley to the east coast with guaranteed deliveries in five days, and that's extremely important for perishable commodities. And what I was not aware of is that Rail-X also has a freezer facility in Delano, which means that they can handle frozen commodities such as frozen orange juice, frozen fruits, and frozen foods. So it was a very interesting meeting, and we're very hopeful that we're gonna see increased business. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cox?
Last week, I attended some training for Calima. Very interesting training in regards to public information officers and elected officials' roles in emergencies and disasters, and we'll be happy to copy that and provide each of the board members with the information from that conference. It's very interesting about understanding who is in charge in case of a natural or man-made disaster, and then the role elected officials ought to play in that. So very good, interesting information. I'll pass it on to our PIO, Judge Chair Abief, who will make copies and distribute it to all of you. Very good information. I look forward to the training this afternoon for Calima as well.
Thank you. Mr. Vanderpoel?
Okay, just a couple of things this morning. First of all, today, there's the grand opening for the Morning Star Foods Organization in Tulare. Very excited to see not only their commitment to Tulare County by staying located here, but also their commitment to our number-one industry in Tulare County, the dairy industry. So real excited to see that happening today. And then also thought I would mention this week, on Thursday, at 6:30 at the Ag Commissioner's Auditorium, we're going to be presenting awards, the annual awards assembly, to the 4-H participants throughout the county. So that'll be a great event, and also shows the commitment to agriculture and our youth in Tulare County.
Very good. Thank you. This last week in Dinuba, the big event was our annual National Raisin Festival, and well-attended, big crowd. I don't know how many thousands of people were there, but I think we...I'm not aware of any problems that took place. Had a big parade and carnival that went over the weekend, and again, well-attended, and a little warm, but the weather was okay. It wasn't raining, because I remember sometimes we've had rain. You never know what to expect this time of the year. So it was a very nice event. This week, I will be going to the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Governing Board is having a retreat. I will be there for a portion of that, but then, as I said earlier, I will need to go to Sacramento for a Commission on State Mandates meeting. So busy time. It seems like once September rolls around, there's just an awful lot of activities that take place. And that's all I have today, so we will move on to our next item, which will be our consent calendar, items 11 through 35. Are there any items which board members wish to handle separately, Mr. Vanderpoel?
I would like to remove item number 14, please.
Remove to handle separately?
Yeah, just for separate consideration.
Number 14?
Yes.
All right. Anything else, other members? Any of the public wish to handle anything separately?
Motion to approve Valance Consent Calendar.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Ennis. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous in support, and we'll take item 14?
Item 14, I just wanted to pull, and I'll give Council time to comment on this if she would like as well, but item number 14 is the Government 101 or Government 102 training session that's going to be put on this December, and it's training for special district board members that we have throughout the county. This happened for the first time last year in October. A very successful event. We had elected officials from throughout the county attend, and these events are great because local attorneys volunteer their time and provide training and education to these elected officials who serve the same populations that we all serve, but they don't...oftentimes, they don't have the funding to provide that training within their jurisdiction. So we're really excited that we're gonna be putting this on December 1st here in the board chambers. We've got great RSVPs so far, and hopefully with the November election, we'll even see additional RSVPs. So I don't know if Council would like to make any comments at this time?
I'm happy to, Supervisor Vanderpoel. Thank you. I want to thank the entire board for allowing us to take this project forward last year and expend a relatively small amount of money in order to do this. It was Supervisor Vanderpoel first brought this forward. The grand jury had been asking for it for years. The grand jury attended last year and was very pleased with the outcome. We already have over 50 people that have RSVP'd at Supervisor's request. This is following the election in November, so there should be new board members that'll be able to come through for the training. It's not identical to last year's program. Some of the presentations are on the same topics, like the filling of vacancies and the Brown Act. There are some new ones, including one to be presented by me on how to respond to grand jury reports, which seems to be an issue. Last year, my topic was conflict of interest, and I started with, "I'm here to scare you." Hopefully, this year, I'll be a little less scary. It seems to be something that serves a public need, and I really commend your board for stepping up since, as I regularly tell people, and I'm sure you do as well, you are not responsible for the oversight or government of these special districts. They're independent bodies. So it's...I think it's nice for you to step up and provide something when the state of California won't.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll make the motion that we approve this item.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vanderpoel, and seconded by Mr. Ennis. Please cast your votes. Votes is unanimous. We have four minutes, but I doubt that that's enough time to do our untimed item this morning. I'm assuming it'll take a little longer than that. So we'll just take a little break right now for about four minutes because we can't do anything until 9:30 for our timed items, so just...
Mr. Chairman, if I can, I think there's other people here to hear that item that there are, that we might not want to wait until after the public period.
We could do that. We could start the public period a little bit later. How much time do we need for the presentation?
Coyne told me 10 minutes.
All right. Let's do that, then. Eric? But then we'll take...
All right.
That's fine. I kinda wanted to do that. So we'll take item number 36 out of order, and that's our untimed items. Request from the County Administrative Office to adopt the Tulare County Tourism Strategic Plan and receive a presentation on tourism development activities, and Mr. Coyne is here to do that. Good morning, Mr. Coyne.
Good morning. Today, I'm asking you to adopt the strategic plan for tourism and also to receive a presentation on the marketing and project activities that we've done. We started...the board established a formal tourism program in their office in the fall of '07, and it was started with $100,000 of the funding, $50,000 in staff time, and $50,000 in actual project dollars. We...today, this year, we're going to...we're coming forward with $45,000 in project funding, proposed project funding. The board gave some pretty clear direction on what they wanted us to do. They wanted one to grow the economy, and let's see if I'm smart enough to figure this out here. Your policy direction is pretty clear. Tourism is an excellent way to grow our economy, to bring in visitor... Tourism is an excellent way to grow our economy, to bring in visitor dollars and showcase kind of our scenic wonders and our recreational opportunities locally. It's a chance to allow visitors to realize what a wonderful place we live in and to take some of that back in memories and share that with others and hopefully they'll come and spend their vacations in the future. And so some of your policy directions were quite clear. You talked about promoting tourism both regionally and nationally. It's no secret the economy has kind of thrown us a loop just recently and people who would plan cross-country trips or international trips, we're seeing that pull back a little bit. We're seeing a lot more regional tourism. But there are two distinct markets and so the approach we've taken is, one, there are a lot of people in this county who, maybe they've been to Three Rivers and they know it well, but they've never been to Springville. And maybe they've never been to our national parks or the forest. And so we both market internally to people who live here or who live in our nearby counties, but also nationally and internationally. We kind of have two distinct pathways for that. The second initiative was to generate economic benefit. This is, tourism brings an enormous amount of money to this region. The state did an exhaustive study of sales tax receipts in 2008 and I was surprised to discover that they can attribute $383 million to visitor spending in Tulare County, just in Tulare County. The tourism market is huge. In that same year, just in recreational, cultural arts, and event spending, there was almost $27 million spent just in this county by visitors. And so they track this pretty carefully. If you go to buy gas, they can look at your debit card or your credit card and see if you have a local zip code or if you live elsewhere. And that's how they define visitor spending as opposed to local spending. Tourism is truly big business in terms of job creation. In the same period, 2008, the state labor statistics show that a little over 5,000 jobs are directly attributable to tourism occupations, either lodging, selling gas, visitor-related air transportation. It's pretty well segregated. That's a lot of jobs. That's 2.5% of our total employment. So tourism is a huge economic engine. So with that second initiative, the policy direction, as I saw, was very clear. You know, whatever we do should have a return on investment. The third initiative, foster greater awareness of Tulare County. This is a wonderful place to live, to work, to visit. And so while of course we want people to come here and have a good time and spend money, we want them to have a good impression of Tulare County. That can be important from everything from recruiting county employees to Lindsay Mann, a hospital director, trying to attract a new nurse or a new doctor to the area. So we have a lot to be proud of and we'd like to share that. Working collaboratively. I thought this was a very important policy direction. People have been doing tourism for decades here and there are some people that do it very well. Usually it's the local chambers that do it for the cities. We have an excellent Visitor and Convention Bureau, Convention and Visitor Bureau, Danica's going to kill me because I never get the name right. But they do an excellent job of promoting our convention center. And so what we wanted to do when we started our tourism plan was not to start from scratch, but to look around and see who's already doing something, who has a successful effort, how do we partner with them, how do we combine resources and try to take it to a larger group effort. And so we've reached out, we've done quite a bit of that in the past. We've reached out and done tourism projects from people that are formerly in the tourism business to reaching out to College of the Sequoias to develop tourism marketing materials and in some cases, schools. And so we're trying to do that. That's just an underlying principle. The last initiative was of course, we have two huge opportunities to promote with Tulare County. Half of our public lands are the great outdoors. We have all these wonderful parks, forests, we have state parks, we have a lot of natural outdoor resources. We also, of course, we're kind of the king of agriculture. There's very few people that are bigger than us and so this is kind of truly the breadbasket of the country. So there are a lot of people who are very interested in food and farming, where their food comes from. They may not want to be a farmer, but they sure like to know where the nuts come from and the fresh fruit or how their milk and cheese is made. And so that's an excellent opportunity to promote the county is through agritourism. With the board's direction, we started a program called Taste Tulare County last year. This was something that I believe Supervisor Vanderpoel had seen being done in another county. It's an Eat Healthy Buy Local program. And so we've adopted that and built a collaborative with a lot of local partners to do that here. And while Taste Tulare County is coordinated through the tourism program and the CAO's office, there are a lot of other people that are involved. We have our Ag Commissioner, our Cooperative Extension, our Farm Bureau, our farming community. So anyway, these are the five strategic initiatives that we've, I'm asking you to adopt as our strategic plan. If we're not doing at least one or more of these initiatives, we probably need to rethink the projects. And so with that, I think I would move on and start talking about the marketing plan and some of the development programs that we've done to implement this. We completed or started quite a few initiatives. You'll see in a minute, the Discover Tulare County is our global webpage that we use to develop the county. This is something we developed, our global tourism page. You kind of find out a little bit about everything in the county right here. And we debuted it earlier this year in January, February at the World Ag Expo and at the LA Times Travel and Adventure Show. When you go to this site, in one place you can find out all the current road conditions for any major road in the county in real time through Caltrans. So you know, are you avoiding wrecks, snow, whatever, construction? You have area attractions, all your events, events calendars and things are linked there. McDermott Fieldhouse, that kind of thing. Lodging is something under development. Eventually we have plans to list all the public lodging in one place. Arts and museums, we're blessed with, almost every city has a museum. There are several museums in Visaya alone. We have the Imagine You, we have the, of course, the counties museums within Moonee Grove. And I know I'm forgetting another one. But we have a whole channel just for the museums and the arts so that people, if they're looking for culture, they can step right into it. And then you look at our communities and these have little profiles, whether they're our eight cities or unincorporated communities. We try to give you a quick snapshot of what's happening, who to contact, how they're governed, how you can do a planning project or economic development. And we'll be developing this further with our agriculture tab. That's one thing we're still working on. With the parks and outdoor recreation, of course you know the national parks, you can go to their website, but we've given you a link to every city parks department. Heck, in Dinuba, you can burrow down to the level and see where they have a bocce and when it's open. It's that detail. This site, I will admit, I'm learning the joys of web marketing and it's an interesting proposition on how to do this. There's hits, there's hits, there's page views, and there's visitor counts. I don't like to talk about the global hits. The global hits on this are several hundred thousand. I'm still sorting out which ones are spam bots and which one are real visitors and real hits. But just looking just for this month of this past August, we had 31,000 page views. This is where somebody spends some time on the website, they're looking around, they're not just clicking through. And what's interesting is there was an average of 47 views per visitor. So people are looking around a little bit, obviously some more than others, but that shows that people are spending quite a bit of time looking at these resources. Our other website interacts with Discover Tulare County and that's the Tulare County eMap, our interactive map of the county. This was developed with input from the chambers, the Sequoia Valley Visitors Council, the cities, and just a whole host of others who had input to this and it's still evolving. The first year, '08-'09, we had about 200,000 hits and I don't remember how many page views, but a pretty good amount for a beginning effort. This is August to August. We had 190,000 hits. These are, when you filter out the spam bots, the people that are trying to, you know, market stuff. We had 22,000 plus page views. We had 16,000 visits. These are different people coming and looking. So we're still, we expect this to grow. My goal frankly is to take both of these two main pages and grow the visitorship by 20% this year. That's what I'm hoping to do in real views. World Ag Expo, this is where we debuted Discover Tulare County and we debuted the Taste Tulare County Program. And I'd like to say that the Taste Tulare County Program is jointly managed by Paul Guerrero in the CAO's office, I think Paul is still here, and myself. And so probably if you have anything to do with ag in this county, at this point, you've probably got a call from one of us as we're trying to grow this initiative. This is a partnership with Tulare County Office of Education and as I said, our other ag partners. And we've also been working with our certified farmers marketers as you-
Eric, I just want to say that I'm going to give you about five more minutes to finish this presentation and you've got several pages to go, so you might want to make it a little bit briefer on a per-page basis.
You bet. LA Travel Show, this is the largest trade show in California, I mean, in the United States. We went down with a cooperative. We had three booths that the board subsidized through the tourism program, through the Visaya Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Visaya Shuttle, the Three Rivers and Springville Chambers. And we talked to thousands of people, but we got 525 solid leads from people who are genuinely interested in traveling here. And we met with, we got contacts for 50 tour group leaders. So we're now following up with these people, both with mail and electronic media. Amgen, this was one of our larger programs. We did a $5,000 sponsorship in cash, 5,000 in Kind County Services. All I really need to say about this, this is filmed live and shown on the Versus Network. More than 18 million people watched this typically worldwide and there were three hours of Tulare County coverage. And we got a bonus and, you know, they say there's no bad publicity. Unfortunately Lance Armstrong was hurt in our county, but we really, everybody learned about Tulare County during this. We used the Amgen Start and a pass-through Exeter to distribute thousands of oranges with Taste Tulare County emblems to bystanders and participants. The Taste Tulare County helped with a new event, the Sequoia Foodie Fest, drew 25,000 people in May. We expect to do a lot more with our nutrition and marketing program with that next year. The Festival of Hope, now this is something that was put together by the Suicide Prevention Task Force. We merely helped with some planning and some marketing for this. This is a fabulous event and I know that some board members went and I encourage all of you to go this coming year. Taste the Arts was a multi-day event that the Visaya Arts Consortium held down in Visaya. Taste Tulare County held a students' arts contest through the schools and we asked people to do something with their favorite fruits and vegetables. We got just about 100 entries. The End of the Trail Classic, we were fortunate, this is something that's nationally ranked, it's becoming quite an event with the Disc Golf Association. It's ranked 39th in the world for cash payouts of more than 2,000 events worldwide last year. We don't know where it's going to rank this year yet. I did an economic study on our investment this year. We invested $2,000 just conservatively in lodging, motel stays, and spending for gas. We estimate more than $26,000 conservatively was put back in the economy. They're already talking now about this becoming a national tour event the year after next. Faces of Farming was something we developed to market agriculture and our farming community at the new Farm, History of Farm Labor and Agriculture Museum. This debuted at the grand opening. This gets an incredible amount of hits from people. Farming is a very popular search term and we had 1,200 visitors in August alone. Just in August, there's 360,000 hits just this August. We'll be doing more with that in the future. We partnered with the City of Visaya to help host the Outdoor Writers Association of California. This is 35 writers that write for everything from travel publications to national magazines. We're already starting to see some articles coming out on that. I'll talk about one last project because we have some partners from the Sequoia Riverlands Trust here. We're partnering with the Sierra Nevada Conservancy and National Geographic to launch a geotourism project. This will be, I think, a very high-profile project and it'll be something we'll be working on in the coming year. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions?
No questions. I wrote one note down, even though the economy seems to be hurting, a success story. I remember reading about the Times Delta here a little while ago, was a 40% increase in the Sequoia Shuttle ridership. So I think the efforts that the county and the cities and the collaborative efforts that we've been making are going to pay off big time for Tulare County. So I'm excited to finally have a plan, a focus, and to be moving in this direction. I think it's very exciting that we're focused and committed to doing this.
Very good. Mr. Vanderpoel?
I'm really glad to see a focused plan and strategic plan as well. I just also wanted to say that I'm really glad to see that as a component of Tulare County tourism, a major component, one of our five initiatives is agriculture and promoting what we have here because that is our strength and it will continue to be our strength. And I'm sure glad to see that we're going to be promoting that. So with that, I'd like to move approval of this item.
Very good. Second. Before we take action, we have another comment by Mr. Ashida.
I've been following what we've been doing in the tourism part. Supervisor Cox and I have been following it very close. And with the success of the program is our collaboration with the other chambers and the other cities. And I think that's, was our intent to start with. We weren't here to start our own tourism program. We were here to collaborate and help everybody else expand theirs. So I want to point that out and I think it's been a very good partnership throughout Tulare County.
Mr. Chair, if I can add one thing onto that, something that I know we've not done and I'd like to run by the board, is we are officially members of one or two of the chambers and I thought, I think this board through this program ought to be members of every chamber of commerce in the county. I know there are several, but I think we need to be represented at those through that partnership. So I know we do, you know, there's a couple that we're members of. I would hope that the board would support, for a minimal cost of maybe $5,000, we could join every chamber and have a presence at every chamber of commerce in this county.
I think the cost would be much less than that, but I support your proposal.
Always quote high, right?
Right. So we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And the votes are unanimous. Thank you, Eric. Sorry to cut you off there. Anybody else wish to address this matter before we leave it? I know some folks here. Yes? Larry, good morning. You can use this microphone here if you'd like.
I assume I introduce myself. I'm Larry Stonemiller. I'm not speaking as spokesperson for any entity of which I'm a member. I'm a member of the Sequoia Visitors Council. I've been involved in that for 10 years along with its predecessor. I serve in advisory capacity at Tulare County Farm Bureau Board and I'm the CEO of KTIP Radio. My comments to you are that- My comments to you are that, a couple things. Number one, in hard times, smart businesses and smart politicians put their money where they can increase their market share and increase revenue. And at the top, I would say, based on the revenue that can be generated, he deserves more money than you've given him. Okay? Second point is, in this cooperative effort, the cooperation with the Welcome Center, that's a tremendous political advantage for us. We're the first place you get a Welcome Center as you leave the Southern Valley and enter the valley. And in the Heritage Center, it immediately ties them to our farming community. Another comment is that the importance he mentioned on eMaps, I think it's not, we're not unaware of the fact that many people who plan their vacations use it by keyword searches, which is how they're going to find us here, and they're going to plan their trip and do their things based on maps that they create. So, the ability to make that eMap as interactive as possible, as timely as possible, and the ability to see it on our iPhones and portable devices. Another comment here is that, my congratulations to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I think one way they sell tourism in sense of bringing convention business here is if dads at the convention, where do the wife and the children go, or vice versa. And I think this is the one way we promote the wholesome and the quality of life that we have here. Mike and I also serve on a, we're going to be meeting tomorrow night on voting on how we improve the Forest Service properties, making recommendations, Supervisor. I would point out that the County of Kern, at the last proposal, they've taken all their little bit of money and focused it on one focal point up in Kernville. That's an enhancement to attract people to the higher Sierras and to do it safely. And I think the better we're able to improve, not only improve our product, but improve the awareness of how people can utilize our mountains. It's not only the agriculture of the foothills, but it's the wonder of our mountains that we can enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Anybody else wish to address this morning? Yes. You can use this microphone right here.
My name is Danica Heatherly, and I'm the current manager of the Visaya Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I'm essentially here this morning to thank Eric publicly and the County of Tulare for the work that you've all done and that Eric has done, and the partnership that we've been able to form over the last year. The Visaya Convention and Visitors Bureau and the county worked together on a number of joint initiatives that neither entity would be able to accomplish or accomplish nearly as well as Supervisor Ashida pointed out without this existing partnership. So, thank you all for that, and Eric, thank you. This morning also, Eric drew specific attention to a lot of the media tours, specifically the Outdoor Writers Association of California that we had recently worked on together. And I'd like you to know that the media that's come out of that is support from newspapers up in the Bay Area. We've had about three articles published so far, and also been present in a number of blogs and biking and hiking guides across the, across the state, excuse me. So, with specific attention to that, and also some of these larger magazines and newspapers that draw a much bigger circulation, we've been able to have a presence in those, like Sunset Magazine and the California Visitors Guide, that we wouldn't have otherwise been able to accomplish. So, thank you.
Thank you for being here this morning. Anyone else wishing to address this on this matter? Very good. Thank you for your attendance. Thank you, Eric, for the presentation, and we will now go to our public hearing items, beginning with item number four. We have a number of these. And before Britt begins his presentation, I just wanted to speak to this matter very briefly. Obviously, condemnation is something the county does not undertake lightly. It is something which we do only as a last resort. Sometimes timeframes are such that we have to move rather quickly to gain possession of properties, to make sure the projects are on course and are not, the funding is not lost. And that is not intended in any way to mean that we are mad at people, that we're upset with them. It is just a, if we don't begin this process, at a certain point in time, we jeopardize entire projects, and that's the reason why we go forward with these. I wanted to emphasize the fact that today is a process, it is not an end. And the opportunities for continued discussion and dialogue with all property owners and the county and its agents who are in the process of acquiring properties for road and transportation projects will continue beyond today and continue up until the very end at the, at the steps of the courthouse, if it has to go that far. But it's certainly not our goal or objective to do that. We recognize that taking people's property for road projects is a proper use of constitutional authority that the county has, but it's something we do, we do not take it lightly. We do it as a last resort, and that's, that's the framework with which we are working here this morning. I appreciate those of you who are here this morning, and you would feel free to talk to people about how we're going about this process. Please let them know that, you know, we're here to try to work with you to make this system work out as the best way possible, realizing that in taking your property, we often cause a lot of discomfort and, and just plain out, it's not a lot of fun. But with that said, I would like to now turn it over to Britt.
Thank you, Chairman Worley. Britt Fussell, Assistant Director with the Resource Management Agency. And as Chairman Worley said, we're here this morning to take action on six resolutions of necessity. Item number ten, WJDLP, a California Limited Partnership, has settled with the County of Tulare and will not be before you for consideration today. Also, to reiterate what Chairman Worley says, the County of Tulare is still very much interested in continuing negotiations with all of these property owners, as he said, right up to the point where we go into court to have a judge determine the value of the property. What we're here for today is to talk about the purpose and need of the project and the need for the property to undertake the project. The board is not here today to discuss what is the compensation for the property. We would continue to negotiate that, or ultimately, that may be settled by the court. With that, I'll begin. I'm going to make a presentation that discusses the project itself, and then that presentation is intended to serve as the foundation for the discussion on each of the individual properties. We're looking at improving the intersection of El Monte Way and Alta Avenue in the city of Dinuba. And we commonly refer to this project as Phase Four of our Road Eighty Widening Project. And the board, or the public may ask, why is the County of Tulare working on a project in downtown Dinuba? It's because the County of Tulare undertook the entire Road Eighty project from the initial project study report done back in the late nineteen-nineties, all the way through the project approval process, completed in, I believe, two-thousand-six, and into construction in the various phases. So, it was just a logical extension of the activities that we were doing. Again, the purpose of this meeting this morning is for board supervisors to conduct hearings regarding the adoption of resolutions of necessity for the El Monte Way-Alta Avenue Widening Project, Intersection Widening Project. As part of this process, the board must make the following findings. First, that the public interest and necessity require the project. Second, that the project is planned and located in a manner that will be most compatible, the greatest public good, and the least private injury. Third, that the property described is necessary for the project. And fourth, that the offer required by Government Code Section 7267.2A, along with the accompanying statement and some of, and summary of the basis of the amount established as just compensation, was made to the owner or owners of record, and the offer and accompanying statement and summary complied with the requirements of said Government Code Section 7267.2A. The project, as I indicated, is to widen and improve the intersection of El Monte Way and Alta Avenue. The current right-of-way width on El Monte Way is seventy-four feet, and El Monte Way proposed right-of-way will vary anywhere from ninety-seven feet to a hundred-and-fourteen feet, depending upon the lane configurations and the need for the traffic movements. The current right-of-way on Alta Avenue is eighty feet, and the proposed right-of-way along Alta Avenue will vary anywhere from eighty-nine to a hundred-and-ten feet, again, depending upon the needs of the project. And what's important to note is, this project, while we've attached it to the Road Eighty Project for construction purposes, it's really part of a larger Avenue 416-El Monte Way Widening Project, which extends all the way from the Fresno County line near Road Thirty-two through the city of Dinuba to Road Ninety-two. Project purposes include increasing the number of lanes for traffic capacity, and I have a graphic on this a little bit later, you should also have one at your, your seats up there, widening to accommodate at least two through lanes. In some cases, there will be dual left turns, and in some cases, there'll be separate right turns, some cases, there's actually a combination right turn-through lane. Project will be constructing a raised median on Alta Avenue, and it's a painted median on El Monte Way. Project will improve drainage at the intersection, upgrade the traffic signal, in addition to any incidental and other related improvements necessary to complete the project. And this is a location map showing the location of the project in Dinuba. Project approvals, the board of supervisors adopted a final environmental impact report pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act on October twenty-first, two thousand eight. This was the Avenue 416 project that I spoke earlier about. Because there's, there's a potential for federal funding in this project, and there actually is federal funding on this phase of the project, Caltrans had to approve a document under the National Environmental Policy Act, Protection Act, I get that confused. They made a finding of no significant impact, or a Fonzie, which is similar to a negative declaration, under the CEQA process. And the Tulare County Transportation Authority has allocated Measure R funding to prepare the plans, specs, and estimate, and for the acquisition of right-of-way, and that was done back in March of this year. Currently, there is funding available under the SAFE Accountable Flexible Efficient Transportation Equity Act, a legacy for users, often referred to as Safety Lou. That six-year transportation bill adopted by the federal government included an earmark, excuse me, an earmark programmed in the Federal Transportation Improvement Program for a project on Avenue 416. And what we've done is finally identified the spot to use this funding, which is the intersection of El Monte Way and Alta Avenue. And that Safety Lou funding is matched by funding from Measure R to construct the project. Public interest and necessity. The, through the environmental process and the traffic studies that were done, it was identified that the traffic volumes passing through the intersection will reach twenty-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty vehicles per day in the year twenty-thirty. It's going to be a busy intersection in Dinuba. This is more than double the current volume of traffic that's using the intersection today. Currently, the intersection in twenty-ten, in the AM and PM peak hours, is operating at a level service of E and F. And this is basically a grade that transportation engineers can give to an intersection, A being the best grade that you can receive, where you have free flow, no congestion, no impacts whatsoever, to F, where you have a lot of congestion and a lot of delay as you, as you pass through a corridor or pass through an intersection. With the project as proposed, the AM, PM peak hours in twenty-thirty would be a level of service C and D. However, if the project is not constructed, we expect that the level of service is still going to be the same E and F, both AM and PM peak hours. So, with that being said, without the project, El Monte Way-Alta Avenue intersection would operate at an unacceptable level of service E and F, creating congestion, undue delay, and thereby negatively affecting air quality. However, with the project, we see the intersection operating at a level of service C and D, thereby minimizing delay and positively affecting air quality. In the particular downtown section of El Monte Way, we identified an accident history of eight-point-six-nine accidents per million vehicle miles traveled. If you take a look at similar road segments and intersections in the county and throughout the state, the expected accident history is about two-point-one-seven accidents per million miles traveled. So, you can see the accident history at that intersection is significant. And that includes both your fatal injury accidents, as well as just your fender benders where nobody is hurt. If you pull out just the fatal and injury accident history, that history is one-point-two-three accidents per million vehicle miles traveled, and the expected accident history is about one-point-two-nine. So, you can see from a fatal and injury accident perspective, we're operating a little bit below what you would expect at a similar intersection. So, obviously, improving the intersection will reduce the potential for, for accidents that are occurring at that location. In trying to identify what project to build, this intersection is fully built out with commercial and residential structures, and so determining the alignment was just a best fit through the area. There was only one alternative that was reviewed, and that was the alternative that would minimize any impacts to existing structures and properties within the project area. And here is a graphic that shows what the intersection would look like once it's completed. We have a raised median on the southern leg of the intersection. We have two left, two left turn lanes here, making left turns on to westbound El Monte. We have a through lane, and then a combination through and right turn lane. On westbound El Monte, we have a, there's a raised median in this location, and then it becomes a painted median up in this area, due to, again, trying to fit this in here. We have dual lefts, two through lanes, and then a separate right turn lane for the heavier right turn movement that's occurring here. For the north leg of Alta Avenue, southbound travel, we have, right now, we've identified one left turn lane, two throes, and a right turn lane. And then eastbound El Monte Way, we have a painted median, two left turn lanes. I believe that's a through lane and then a combination through right turn lane. And then you can see here all the parcels that are affected by this project, some of which we have already settled with and acquired the right-of-way and are not part of the action today. And with that, before I move into the individual parcels, I would ask if the board has any questions regarding this project.
Any questions, members? Continue.
Thank you. Again, as I begin with the first one, I'd just like to reiterate that the presentation that I just made is to be considered to be part of the public record for your action this morning. The first item is item number four on your agenda. It's Kathleen L. Asseris. The affected property is commonly known as Assessor Parcel Number 017040017, and in this particular case, it is a partial take. And the property is located, house back, at southwest corner of El Monte Way and Alta The right-of-way this required is along both frontages of the property. It varies in width from anywhere from four feet to twenty-two feet, depending upon the location and need for improvements. There is also a need for an adjacent variable width, temporary construction easement, and the, the property necessary for the right-of-way would be acquired in fee title by the County of Tulare, and then there would be a temporary construction easement that would be acquired in the form of an easement, and the properties are more specifically described in Appendix A, which is attached to the resolution. And with that, I'd like to note that you have a revised resolution on this item before you. As we were going through this process, it was determined that the right-of-way acquisition needed to be modified a little bit in order to avoid some existing improvements, so the right-of-way description has changed slightly. And here's a graphic of the right-of-way. One of the things that's important that's going on here is that this little dashed square is a PG&E electrical vault with transformer and PG&E equipment. And this vault, because it will be within the travelway, will need to be relocated, and we have been working, our consultants have been working with PG&E. PG&E is aware of this and is on board. Basically, this transformer would be moved back behind the curb in the new right-of-way. Right now, it's actually, the existing right-of-way line is this dash line, is actually on private property. So, when I get to identifying the findings in the resolution, you'll see there's actually a finding that's specific to this, dealing with this, this particular issue. But PG&E has indicated that they're on board and have no issues with relocating their This is an impact map where we attempt to show- This is an impact map where we attempt to show the existing property, existing buildings that are on the property, and how the right-of-way is worked around to try to avoid those, and yet still be able to get in the necessary improvements. One of the things that's happening right here is you see a sort of a pop-out. This is the drive approach to this property. And under ADA guidelines, you cannot have a path of travel go across a normal driveway because of, number one, the crossfall of the driveway exceeds the two percent that's allowable for a path of travel. And then you also have the slopes where you dub down in the driveway are too steep for handicapped accessibility. So what happens for the path of travel is we have to bring it around the back of the sidewalk in order to maintain the proper grades and meet ADA compliance. That's why instead of taking the right-of-way that's in this location straight across the back, it has to be widened out in order to accommodate that sidewalk improvement. The offer required by Government Code Section seven-two-six-two-point-two-A was made to Asseris on June twenty-ninth of this year, and that package consisted of an offer not less than the county's appraised value of the property and believed to be just compensation for the property and the interest to be acquired. We sent a notice to Ms. Asseris on September third of twenty-ten pursuant to the Code of Civil Procedure one-two-four-five-point-two-three-five, and that notice was mailed to the name and address that appears on the last equalized county assessment roll. The other thing that we did was to make sure that we had adequate and appropriate notices. At any current addresses that we had on record, we sent notice to. In this particular case, there were two addresses. One of them did come back undelivered, and they were sent registered mail with return receipt. So we have assurance of it being. Staff this morning is recommending that the board conduct a public hearing regarding the adoption of this resolution of necessity. And based upon the evidence that's presented in writing, as well as this report, that you adopt the resolution of necessity, making the following findings. That the public interest and necessity require the project. That the project is planned and located in the manner that would be, will be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. That the property described is necessary for the project. That the use of the subject property is sought to be taken is a more necessary public use than the use to which the property is appropriated. And that's the additional finding on this property to address the PG&E easement. And then lastly, that the offer required by Government Code seven-two-six-seven-point-two-A, together with accompanying statement of in summary of the basis for the amount established as just compensation, was made to the owners or owners of record, and that the offer and accompanying statement met the requirements of said Government Code. With that, I would respond to any questions that the board has on this particular property.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Britt, have you had the opportunity to speak with Ms. Asseris, or is she just not responding at all?
I have not directly had an opportunity. We have, through our consultant, Doc in Engineering, they have a subconsultant for right-of-way acquisition, Intrawest, which is a new member of our team on this particular aspect of the project. They're the ones that have been working with her. I do not know the precise issues. Usually, it's compensation. Usually, it's not related to the project itself. It's usually related to compensation, and I see that Robert Newby is here. I don't know if he can shed any additional light on that or not.
Okay, because, you know, I just know that we've had some difficulty with consultants in the past, so that's why I'm just asking if county staff's had the opportunity to speak with her. And if she hasn't even spoken to the consultant, then that makes sense.
During my previous hearings, you know, there was comments made by some of the property owners in this regarding the approach by the consultants or subconsultants we were using. And we, on this project, purposely substituted a new right-of-way consultant in, and we have not heard any negative comments regarding the approach by this consultant.
That's good, yeah, thank you.
All right, anybody, any other members? This is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing. This is regarding the affected parcel. APN number is zero-one-seven, zero-four-zero, zero-one-seven. The owner is Kathleen L. Asseris. Is there anyone here wishing to address the board on this matter in a public hearing? Seeing hearing no one, we will bring it back to the board, close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for action.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ennis, seconded by Mr. Ashida. Please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous. Thank you.
The next affected property is Alcala and Viveros. Apologize to the property owners if I'm mispronouncing their name. The affected property is zero-one-four, zero-six-three, zero-two-two, and they're looking at this as seeing a partial take. The property is located on the north side of El Monte Way, west of the Alta Avenue intersection. The right-of-way that's required, again, is located on the north side of El Monte Way. It's twelve feet in width and approximately sixty-nine feet long, or the width of the parcel. In addition, there is a need for an adjacent ten-foot temporary construction easement. Actually, it's, when all is said and done, it will not be a rectangular ten-foot by sixty-nine feet. It will need to be adjusted to avoid the structure, so there's going to be, need to be some modifications made to that legal description relative to the TCE. And the property that's necessary for the right-of-way, as well as a temporary construction easement, is more specifically described in Appendix A, which is attached to the resolution of necessity. And here's a graphic showing the existing property and the twelve-foot right-of-way that's needed to cross this area. This is an impact drawing. This is a situation where we have an existing residence, and the existing curb and gutter is this line, where the tip of this arrow is, is right here. And the acquiring twelve-foot of right-of-way, the existing right-of-way line is about in this location. Here's the red line is the new right-of-way line, it's twelve feet. The new curb and gutter lip is at this location. The curb face would be about two feet behind that, or about basically ten foot from the right-of-way line to the face of curb. In the end, the right-of-way will be seven and a half feet off of this little pop-out off of the house, and probably more than ten feet off of the right-of-way to the main part of the structure here. And the yellow hashed area is a temporary construction easement that will need to be modified to go around the house so that we don't actually get into the structure. We actually have made an offer to this property owner for a consideration of a total take. At this point in time, they have declined and want to proceed with a partial take. We just have not been able to negotiate that acquisition.
I'd just point out to the board, excuse me, Britt, as you look at this map, El Monte has already been widened at this point, years before. So these houses are very close to the existing roadway. And as we look, pushing the right-of-way even further up, you can see, you know, seven feet is very, very close to the building.
Right.
And that's just the way things have gone there. These are not very desirable living arrangements for people who live there today because of what's happening on the road.
And if I'm not mistaken, I think the zoning on this property may be RM three, so it's a higher-density residential is the anticipated general plan use long into the future. The offer package was made to the property owners back on April twenty-third of two thousand ten, and that package did consist of an offer not less than the county's appraised value of the property and believed to be just compensation for the property and the interest to be acquired. Notice of this hearing was sent to the property owners on September third of two thousand ten, and that was done pursuant to the Code of Civil Procedure Section one-two-four-five-two-three-five. Again, that notice was mailed to the name and address that appears on the last equalized county assessment roll. Staff is recommending this morning that the board conduct a hearing regarding the adoption of this resolution of necessity. And then based upon the evidence presented in writing and orally, adopt the resolution of necessity, making the four required findings, that the public interest and necessity require the project, project is planned and located in the manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury, that the property described is necessary for the project, and that the offer required by Government Code Section seven-two-six-seven-point-two-A, together with any accompanying statements of in summary of the basis of that amount, as established as just compensation, was made to the owners of record, and the offer and accompanying statement complied with the requirements of Government Code Section seven-two-six-seven-point-two-A. With that, I would respond to any questions that the board would have regarding this particular property.
Any questions from board members? If not, I will open the public hearing. This is regarding Assessor Parcel Number zero-one-four, zero-six-three, zero-two-two. Property owners are Rafael Alcala and Maria de Jesus Viveros. Anybody wishing to address this matter this morning? Seeing hearing no one, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Ennis. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous.
Thank you, board. The next property is owned by the John and Judy Cuts Living Trust, under trust dated July eighth, nineteen eighty-seven. They actually own two properties in the project area. The first is known as a parcel APN number zero-one-four, zero-six-three, zero-one-nine, and it's a partial take on that property. The second affected parcel is known as zero-one-four, one-six-one, zero-two-five. And again, that is a partial take as well. And they're the two properties owned by the Cuts. They are on the northeast and northwest corners of the intersection of Alta Avenue and El Monte Way. I believe the northeast corner is an old Chevron standard service station that I believe is now not operating. And I believe over here, there's a coffee kiosk or hot dog.
Not operating either.
The right-of-way that's required is, varies in width across the frontage, pretty much as I had described in the very first item, in order to accommodate the ADA path of travel. And again, I would like to also add to the record that the comments I made regarding the project in general are to be included as part of the public record for your action this morning. There's also a need for a temporary construction easement that's variable in width and follows the right-of-way acquisition. The right-of-way required and the temporary construction easement that's required are more specifically described in Appendix A attached to the resolution. And again, the property on the northeast corner had a slight modification to the right-of-way required to accommodate existing improvements. And so before you is a revised resolution that deals. This is the zero-one-nine property. This is on the northwest corner of the intersection, and this is the right-of-way that is required. And this is the impact map that shows being uses on the site, and the right-of-way that's being, needs to be acquired, and then the temporary construction easement that wraps its way around it to provide for construction. On the northeast corner, this area right here is the right-of-way that's required for the project, and an impact drawing that shows how the right-of-way and the TCE fits around the improvements that are existing on that particular property. The offer package required by Government Code Section seven-two-six-seven-point-two-A was made to the Cuts on May thirteenth of two thousand ten, and that offer package consisted of an offer not less than the county's appraised value of the property and is believed to be the just compensation for the property and interest to be acquired. The notice of this hearing was sent to the Cuts on September third of this year pursuant to Code of Civil Procedure Section one-two-four-five-point-two-three-five, and that notice was mailed to the name and address that appears on the last equalized county assessment roll. Staff recommends this morning that you conduct this public hearing, and then based upon the evidence presented in writing and orally, adopt the resolution of necessity, making the four required findings, that the public interest and necessity require the project, that the project is planned and located in the manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and least private injury, that the property described is necessary for the project, and that the offer required by Section seven-two-six-seven-point-two-A of the Government Code, together with the accompanying statement of in summary of the basis for the amount established as just compensation, was made to the owner or owners of record, and that the offer and accompanying statement complied with said Government Code Section. With that, staff would respond to any questions that the board may have regarding the Cuts parcel.
Britt, was consideration given, especially to the parcel zero-one-nine, as a take of a total parcel? It seems like that's a smaller parcel, and we've shaved off, again, quite a bit more of the frontage on both sides and a corner. Was that given, have we had a conversation about a total take, or is that something you're not interested in?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't think so. No, we have not, but I, you know, I know we're continuing to negotiate. That is something that we could put on the table for consideration by the property owner. I don't know if they, I think some of our findings are the property owner doesn't necessarily want a total take unless it turns out to be financially in their best interest. But the use can still, our analysis is that the use can still continue to happen on the property, that we're not impacting to the use to the degree that it would be a total take. The other thing we need to keep in mind is that through the appraisal process, the appraiser identifies if there's any damages being caused by the project, and those are identified, and the property owners also offered that compensation as well. So if there are damages identified that aren't to the point of a total take, but do potentially damage the property, it would be compensated for those as well.
Right. Mr. Cox?
You might have answered it. I wrote down May thirteenth is when our last offer. I'm just going to assume that between May thirteenth and today, there's been other several conversations, that the negotiations have continued.
The May thirteenth date is the date that the offer package was first presented to the property owners. Negotiations continue to go on. Contact continues to be made. The property owners are offered, you know, up to five thousand dollars to do their own appraisal and, you know, present a counter offer based on appraised offer. So the answer to the question is, that's the date the offer was initially made. Negotiations continue to go on.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Ashida?
I've noticed on some of these maps that we show the amount of square footage that we're taking.
Yes.
I didn't see on all of them the amount of square footage that was remaining.
Yeah, that's not a number that's identified on the drawing. It is a number that would be, I believe, identified in the appraisal. Looking to Robert. Yes, so they would identify the amount of property that's left over in the afterstate. These drawings are intended for acquisition purposes, and so we only identify the property that's being acquired.
The reason I bring that up, and it's not so much that imperative today, but in the future, once we do, I like to see the remaining square footage. It gives us a real quick analysis of if that site's really viable, if the remainder of that site's really viable for home or commercial.
Yeah, and again, this particular parcel, of course, I'm familiar with all this land because I've traveled it frequently, was a small drive-through coffee type of arrangement that's been through two different owners. The last, it was a hot dog stand, and it's now bacon. So when you say it's available to current use, it is not currently being used. There may have been some issues about its viability even before we take this property. Obviously, taking this property does leave a smaller parcel, and it raises an issue, I guess. I mean, these things have to be addressed later on, but it's just something to point out that this may be one of those situations where there's not much left over, and it's going to be hard to make use of it. So I think it goes to Mr. Ashida's comment as well. Any other comments or questions before we open the public hearing? All right, I'll open the public hearing at this time. This is regarding item number six. The Assessor Parcel Numbers are two, zero-one-four-dash-zero-six-three-dash-zero-one-nine, and zero-one-four-dash-one-six-one-dash-zero-two-five. The owners of record are the Cuts Trust. And anybody here today to speak on this matter? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Motion by Mr. Cox to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ashida. Votes please be cast, and they are unanimous in support of the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, board. The next property is owned by John R. Garza and Dolores S. Garza. And again, all of the information that I presented in the very first part of my presentation relative to the aspects of the project are to be considered part of the public record for your consideration. for your consideration. The affected property is Assessor Parcel Number 014-063-028, and this is a partial take. And the property is located on the north side of El Monte Way, west of the Alta Avenue intersection. A previous property that you considered this morning is the one where my mouse is at for Kayla and Eros. The right-of-way that's required is located along the north side of El Monte Way. It's 12 feet wide by 56 feet in length, or the width of the parcel. In addition, there is a need for a temporary construction easement, and I will show you on the impact drawings here shortly that we're also going to have to modify that to make sure we don't take the structure into the TCE. The more precise descriptions of the right-of-way are, and the TCE is attached to, as Appendix A to the resolution of necessity. And then here's our right-of-way plat that's prepared for the project, 12-foot wide width of the property, impact drawing. This is another one of the residential properties on the project where we're, again, acquiring right-of-way as I, where we have the existing curb and gutter is out here on the yellow lines, and then we have the right-of-way line that we're acquiring to is the red line requiring 12, 12 feet of right-of-way. The location of the existing curb and gutter lip, as well as the curb and gutter, puts the curb and gutter about 10 feet off of the right-of-way line, and you can see that the right-of-way is seven and a half feet off of the pop-out on the house, but is about 10, 11 feet away from the main part of the house that is to the west. And on this particular property, again, recognizing the proximity to the house, the offer has been made to do a total take, but as far as resolution necessity process, we need to proceed on a partial take basis. The offer package was made to the Garzas on May 5th of this year, and that offer package did consist of an offer not less than the county's appraised value of the property and believed to be the compensation for the property and interests to be acquired. The notice of this hearing today was sent to the Garzas on September 3rd of this year, and that was done pursuant to Code of Civil Procedure Section 1245.235, and that notice was mailed to the name and address that appears on the last equalized county assessment roll. Staff is recommending this morning that the Board of Supervisors conduct the public hearing on the adoption of the resolution of necessity, and based upon the evidence presented in writing and orally, adopt the resolution of necessity, making the following That the public interest and necessity require the project, that the project is planned and located in the manner that will be the most compatible with the greatest public good and least private injury, that the property described is necessary for the project, and that the offer required by Government Code Section 7267.2A, together with the accompanying statement of and summary of the basis of the amount established as just compensation, was made to the owners or owners of record, and the offer and accompanying statement and summary complied with said Government Section. With that, I would respond to any questions that the Board may have.
Any questions, Board members? All right. This is the public hearing. Open the public hearing. This says to, this affects Assessor Parcel Number 014-063-028. The property owners are John R. Garza and Dolores S. Garza. Is there anyone here wishing to address this, the Board on this matter today? Seeing hearing no one, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Board for action.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ennis, seconded by Mr. Cox. Please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous in support of the resolution.
The next property before you this morning is property owned by Fee B. Torio. The affected property is known as Assessor's Parcel Number 014-063-029, and this is a total take. I started working on this particular item. We were actually looking at a partial take, but because the right-of-way is so close, actually, we believe it cuts into the structure, it's been converted to a total take. So on this one, item number eight, there is a revised resolution before you for consideration of this as a total take. The property is located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Franklin Way and Alta Avenue, which is basically the northernmost limits of this intersection project. Data, the acquisition is a total take, and the legal description of the total parcel is identified in Appendix A attached to the resolution of necessity. And here's our impact graphics. You can see the right-of-way right here is beginning to clip the corner of the structure at this location. We are negotiating with the property owner for a total take, full take. The offer package required was first made to Mr. Torio on June 3rd, 2010, and that offer package, not less than the county's appraised value of the property and believed to be just compensation for the property and interest required. Notice of this hearing was mailed to the property owner on September 3rd, 2010, pursuant to the Code of Civil Procedure Section 1245.235, and that notice was mailed to the name and address that appears on the last equalized county assessment roll. Staff is recommending this morning that your Board conduct a hearing regarding this resolution of necessity, and then based upon the evidence that's presented in writing and orally, adopt the resolution of necessity, making the four required findings that the public interest and necessity require the project, the project is planned and located in the manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and least private injury, that the property described is necessary for the project, and that the offer required by Government Code Section 7267.2A, together with the accompanying statement of and summary of the basis of the amount established as just compensation, was made to the owner or owners of record and that the offer and accompanying statement and summary complied with said Government Code Section. With that, I would respond to any questions that the Board may have.
Any questions, Board members? None? This is the public hearing. We'll open up the public hearing. This is, affects property Assessor Parcel Number 014-063-029. The affected property owner is Fee B. Torio. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this on this matter this morning? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Board for action.
Mr. Chair, may I repent and have a question?
Surely.
As we look at a corner property like this, I realize it's hitting the house, having, being familiar with the Visalia-Muny Boulevard expansion. I know we had a case like this, Britt, where road hit the bank. Has consideration been made of modification to the residence, or is it just too old beyond doing that? I know the bank chopped a corner off, and it was good to go.
These are sometimes driven by, you know, what the property owner wants to do, that they may have seen this as an opportunity to do a full take. However, we may not be, you know, being able to negotiate what that amount would be. And again, this actually started as a partial take and moved into a total take because of the fact that the right-of-way is hitting the house.
And I can, I can't comment on the fact that this is not a real substantial structure. I mean, it's a simple residence in a sense, and probably would not justify making very much of a modification to the structure, I think.
Well, I get my follow-up questions, I guess, would be well down the road now. We own a lot. What do we do with a vacant lot so that we can deal with that later? So.
Once, once the project is complete, we, where we have full takes, we will have surplus property for the Board consideration of disposal. In this particular case, these properties are located in the city of Dinuba. We would need to work with them to figure out how to dispose of them. One of the things that will happen is that whatever monetary value that comes back from the disposal of the property will need to go either, because we're buying this with Measure R, we'll either need to come back to Measure R for another road project, or to be used by, on another road project, so it doesn't just become lost in the general fund or in some other.
Good point. Good. And there was a motion first, but he has a question.
I made a motion, but I have a question. When we take these buildings, I mean, these lots, in the cost of the right-of-way, is the demolition and removal of those buildings included in that cost?
Yes. The, the clearing of the site, the removal of the building is all included as a cost for right-of-way acquisition and gets billed to the right-of-way portion of the project.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion was made by Mr. Sheed, it's seconded by Mr. Cox. There was some discussion between. I'm ready to vote. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're very welcome. Thank you, and I believe we're up to our last one.
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken.
Item number nine. This affected property is owned by Waltrust Properties Incorporated, which is a Delaware corporation. This is Walgreen property in Dinuba. Assessor's parcel number is 017-040-030, and this is a partial take. And you can see, parcel is located west of Alta Avenue, on the south side of El Monte Way. The right-of-way varies in width from about 6.24 feet up to 22 feet. In addition, there is a, an adjacent variable width temporary construction easement that's required, and both the, the right-of-way, which would be acquired in Fee, and the temporary construction easement, which is acquired as an easement, are more specifically described in Appendix A, which is attached to the resolution of necessity. And then I would also like to add that all of my initial comments relative to the project in general are to be included as part of the public record for deliberations this morning. And then this is our right-of-way plat that we prepare for the property. You can see the irregular shape of it. Happening is, across the frontage of the Walgreen property is the, the curb and gutter begins to transition over to widen out to accommodate the additional lanes needed at this location.
Any questions? This, of course, fortunately, was a situation, it's a newer structure, anticipating this kind of expansion, so you can see the building was, was, of course, quite a ways back from, from the road itself. They may lose a few parking, some parking potentially, but.
Thank you. That's, while the sign was up, is there a loss of any parking spaces because of this? They still have a adequate width in between the ends of the cars to just move the space back?
...of landscaping, and they're currently asking the city to acknowledge that parking won't have to be modified.
Parking will not have to be modified, and that there is a slight loss of landscaping, which, again, are considered to be damages under the appraisal process, and there would be an amount calculated for that, that damage, and they would be awarded that as part of the compensation for the property.
Mr. Chairman, pardon me if I may interrupt. May I ask a question of the court reporter?
Certainly.
Were you able to note, ma'am, the comments made by Mr. Newby, even though they probably didn't go out over the, the broadcast? Okay, so they are on the record.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments?
I know you're getting tired of hearing me speak. Let me finish this presentation, and I'll go home.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to finish.
You can't go home. There's still eight hours left in the day.
I started at six. The offer package required by Section 7267.2A was made to Waltrust Properties Incorporated on May 13th of 2010, and again, that package, that offering was of not less than the county's appraised value of the property and believed to be the compensation for the property and interest to be acquired. The notice of this hearing was mailed to Waltrust Properties back in September, on September 3rd, 2010, pursuant to the Code of Civil Procedure 1245.235. That notice was mailed to the name and address that appears on the last equalized county assessment roll. Staff this morning is recommending that your Board conduct a hearing regarding the adoption of the resolution of necessity, and then based upon the evidence presented in writing and orally, adopt the resolution of necessity, making four required findings that the public interest and necessity require the project, the project is planned and located in the manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and least private injury, that the property described is necessary for the project, and that the offer required by Government Code Section 7267.2A, together with the accompanying statement of and summary of the basis of the amount established as just compensation, was made to the owner or owners of record, and the offer and accompanying statement and summary complied with said Government Code Section. That I would respond to. Any additional questions the Board may have relative to this piece of property?
Are there any questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing. This is a hearing regarding the affected property Assessor Parcel Number 017-040-030. Effective property owner is Waltrust Properties, Inc., a Delaware corporation. Is there anyone here this morning wishing to speak to this matter? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Board for action.
Move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Ennis, seconded by Mr. Benepol. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous.
Thank you, Board, and again, to reiterate, even though you've adopted resolutions and necessities on these properties this morning, we will continue to work with the property owners and try to come to a negotiated settlement.
Thank you very much, and again, and as we said, this is not the end. It's still part of the process, and we are very hopeful that the matter's worked out prior to having to go to take legal proceedings. Mr. Chair?
Yes. I want to jump on a soapbox for 30 seconds. I think it's because of the citizens of Dinuba that we have Measure R. If you look at the overwhelming support that the citizens of Dinuba gave to Measure R, I think that's why we have that nearly $1 billion of money flowing into the county over the next, you know, 30 years. So I'm glad to see the citizens continuing to support this, even though these are difficult things to do, a much-needed project.
Just as an aside, I've had friends come up from Southern California, leaving Hollywood and driving to Dinuba, and the worst intersection that they have encountered in their entire trek has been at this intersection, because it is very heavily traveled. Road 80 is a major road of people coming from Southern California up to the mountains, going to Hume Lake or Pine Flat, Kings Canyon, National Park, and so you have that out-of-town traffic, and then there's a tremendous amount of, of local traffic between Visalia, Dinuba, Reedley, and Orange Cove. So this is a very, very heavily traveled road, and this, this project is, is very much needed, so, thank you.
Thank you, Board.
And I believe that completes our general this morning. I did have, receive a note that the Governor signed the Williamson Act bill. I'm sorry, I don't know the, the number of that bill particularly.
2530.
2530, and this is with a bill that actually has its origins in Tulare County, the idea being to try to restore some of the funds back to the county, which, the counties which have lost from the subvention, and only is triggered by that loss. If the state reinstates its subvention, then this would not go into play, but if they do not restore it to a certain percentage, then this allows the counties to take a different sort of approach that would limit the number of years from 10 to nine years on Williamson Act contracts, and the super would go from, from 20 to 18. And we would get about, I think we figured about 60, 53%, I think, of our subvented dollars would be restored back to the county. The good news for the farmers is that, that it only applies to the county, so the, the amount of taxes that would normally go to pay to, to education primarily, that, that is not, not paid by the farmer, so it's a limited amount of money, but it's a direct benefit back to the counties. And so I want to thank the people who worked to get this done. I know it was a lot of work. I was involved in some of those preliminary meetings. I know our county staff was, was heavily involved, but anyway, so that was signed by the Governor this morning, and it's now enacted.
Supervisor Worthy, in case you haven't had a chance to review your email as part of the SESEC Working Group, there is so-called cleanup legislation that's going to be added to the, probably to the budget cleanup bill, and I, you and I received, I believe, a version number five of that, so.
We're good. We have items for closed session, counsel?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do. Item B is off. Items A, C through L. I do not anticipate any announcements.
Thank you for being here. Hey, Robert? Robert, before you leave, second.